Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. Lord, Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. Lord, I need you. Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. Lord, I need you. Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. Oh, Lord, I need you. Oh, I need you. Every hour, I need you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. My one defense, my one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. Yeah. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. Every hour, Lord. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. I need you, I need you, Lord. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. All I need is you, Lord. Is you, Lord. All I need is you. My one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you. My one defense, my one defense, my righteousness. Oh God, how I need you.
Good evening viewers. Once again, we are excited to be here today, this Thursday, as we continue with the main topic of the church and our mandate. We are very excited that we picked the book of Acts, a transitional book after the Gospels that were preached by Christ Jesus to when the gospel was now moving from the Jews' sect to Gentiles. And last week, when we were doing our studies, we were looking at that transitional process. And we talked about the first missionary journey for Paul. Today, we want to continue with this particular area. And before we start, I want to introduce ourselves. My name is Pastor Peter Shikuku, an intern pastor here at Gospel Centers International Central Church. I'm glad to be here to do God's work. Thank you. Let me invite my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Good evening, good evening viewers. I am excited to be here this evening to join the Bible study. My name is Godfrey Isia.
Amen.
My name is Joyce Mekasingi, GCI Central. I'm excited to be here, Karibuni Sana.
Amen.
Good evening viewers. I'm Beatrice Isia. Christ is my personal Savior. I welcome you all to this Bible study. Amen.
Amen.
Praise God and good evening church and those joining us. My name is Kalam Boui. I'm from GCI Thika Road. I'm happy and excited to be part of the team today. May the Lord minister to us through His word.
Amen. By God's grace, that is the team that is going to take us through the Bible study today. And I'm happy to be their moderator by God's grace. Allow me to ask Pastor Joyce to open for us with a word of prayer.
Thank you. Let's believe and pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts. Thank you for saving us by grace and even for choosing us to be vessels for your use, oh God. As we begin this study, we invite the presence of the Holy Spirit, who is our teacher, who is our counselor, who is the spirit of wisdom, to come and drive the discussion throughout the service. We thank you and we honor you. We pray that you bless our viewers and you will bless the church indeed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Dear viewers, once again, we want to continue with the church and our mandate. It has been a very exciting topic to deal with because we are bringing the church to the understanding of where the origin is, how the early church worked, how they operated, and how the church of God today should continue to do God's work. And we are going to have a reading, starting with our main text that we have been doing for the last three good weeks. That is from the book of Acts, chapter 1, verse 6 to 11. I want to ask my brother Godfrey to take us from verse 6 to 9, and Pastor Joyce will do 6 to 8, then Pastor Joyce 9 to 11.
Acts 1:6 to 8. So, "When they had come together, they asked him, 'Lord, will you at this time restore the kingdom of Israel?'" He said to them, "It is not for you to know times or reasons or seasons that the Father has fixed by His own authority; but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and all Judea and Samaria and to the end of the earth."
"And when he had said these things, and they were looking on, he was lifted up, and a cloud took him out of their sight. And while they were gazing into heaven as he went, behold, two men stood by them in white robes and said, 'Men of Galilee, why do you stand looking into heaven? This Jesus, who has been taken up from you into heaven, will come in the same way as you saw him go into heaven.'"
Thank you Pastor Joyce. I want also to read us, we also want to read from the book of Acts, chapter 15, from verse 36 to 41. I will ask Sister Beatrice to read from 36 to 38, and then Sister Scholar 39 to 41. Acts, chapter 15.
Okay. Acts, chapter 15, verse 36 to 38. "Some time later, Paul and... Paul said to Barnabas, 'Let us go back and visit the believers in all the towns where we preached the word of the Lord and see how they are doing.' Barnabas wanted to take John, also called Mark, with them; but Paul said... But Paul did not think it wise to take him because he had deserted them in Pamphylia and had not continued with them in the work."
Verse 39, "They had such a sharp disagreement that they parted company. Barnabas took Mark and sailed for Cyprus; but Paul chose Silas and left, commanded by the believers, to the grace of the Lord. He went through Syria and Cilicia, strengthening the churches."
Amen. Thank you very much for the reading of God's word. Dear viewers, we are going on with the missionary work or the missionary journey that was done by Paul. Last week, we did the first missionary journey. And this week, we are doing the second missionary journey up to the third one. And as we have seen how the word of God reads, back to our main text, we have been talking about the disciples waiting in Jerusalem to be endowed with the power to be clothed. And in chapter 15 that we have just read, verse 36 talks something very important. Paul is suggesting to Barnabas that they should return and visit the brothers in every city where they had proclaimed the word of God and how they are. This tells me how Paul was such a very concerned man of God. As a missionary, doing God's work, spreading the gospel of God and opening churches, he reached at a point whereby he wanted to go back and find out how the churches that had been planted were doing. And this is marking the beginning of his second journey. We are told that the spirit of God led him westward into Europe where he planted churches in Mycoidenia and Achaea, that is in Greece. And then he is now making a suggestion. We are looking at a man of God, someone who is so concerned. And that informs my decision that even after we have planted churches, because I know we are a missionary church as Gospel Centers International, but again, I know even other ministries outside there have such kind of responsibility. It is not just a matter of planting and leaving. You plant and go back to find out how the churches are doing. So, this is marking the beginning of the second journey. So allow me to open the stage for my fellow panelists as we tackle the second journey for Paul. Anyone who is ready to start us off?
Okay. The church in Macedonia and Achaea. First of all, when Paul and Barnabas want to take up the journey and to go and minister there, we are seeing that it is... I don't know whether I have seen any other, but it is one of the journeys that started with a controversy. So that this one wants, Barnabas wants them to go to this direction. Paul thinks that we need to go this other direction. So there is a sharp maybe argument between the two missionaries. So then after that, they part ways. And this one goes their direction and the other one goes their direction. So it's very interesting to know that even from the church, you can have controversies and you can have misunderstandings. But we read from their character and their behavior and from the focus that they had on the mission that even when you have misunderstandings or you are not agreeing on what you need to do, let it not stop the work of the kingdom. Because Barnabas went his direction and Paul went his direction, but both of them were on the mission work. Yeah, so it's interesting to find that.
Sure. Any other contribution?
Also interesting to note that the disagreement did not make either of them to quit. Because at times we see when we are faced with disagreements or just differences of opinions and thoughts in the church. And when we cannot agree on something, some people take the easy way out of quitting and just walking away and saying, "Wacha ikai, let them do it." So that should not be the case. As Pastor Joyce is saying, we should stay focused on the course.
Amen. I love that particular point where we are seeing a disagreement. There was a controversy between the two missionary apostles. But that does not, that did not stop them from going on with God's work. Disagreements may occur, but that should not stop us and make us quit the work of God. Many people have quit the work of God, even in different small ministries that we have within the church. There can be misunderstanding, there can be disagreement. But this should never stop us from going on with God's work. Remember, we said last two weeks ago that unity of purpose is very crucial in doing God's work. So sometimes when we disagree, that should not stop us from doing God's work. And that is one thing that we are seeing, a controversy in the churches that were opened. And we are seeing Paul move to Derby and then to Lister and met young Timothy, whose mother was a Jew and father a Greek. A man who was both a Jew and a Greek. And since he wanted Timothy to join them, he circumcised him so that he doesn't offend the Jews. I think there was something that we talked about in our previous teaching about that circumcision. Let it not bring a controversy to you, but should it bring a controversy to you, we still urge you just to write for us your comments and the questions because we shall be very happy when those questions come our way. To help us, just tackle the word of God. I can see my sister Beatrice as a point that she wants to add, yes?
There is something striking that I've just received from what you are saying. We find that Paul, after he had that controversy, that disagreement with Barnabas, he did not, after he decided to go on a different direction, he went on grooming others. And like now we have Timothy, then we also have Titus.
Sure.
That shows that once you have the zeal and you are filled by the power of the Holy Spirit, you should not stop at anything. If anything, you have to even recruit more people, preach to more people and bring them in your team so that you continue with the word without wavering from the faith. That's what I've seen.
Yes, a scholar you seems to be.
Yeah. When we see them parting ways and one team now goes back to visiting, that is Paul, goes back to visiting the churches that he had visited in his first missionary journey. And these are churches that already had believers. They already had converts who had converted to Christianity. But Paul takes time to now go back to them and encourage them and disciple them. And as we were talking about this, I remember the mission of our church, GCI, that our mission is to evangelize the world, but it does not end at that. We also disciple believers such that these people who have been converted to Jesus, to Christianity or to God or to Jesus, are brought up and raised up to a level where they can also now do the multiplication themselves. They can also go out there and win souls for Christ. And after that, we raise leaders. And even this theme here is a result of the church initiative to raise leaders, which we thank the church leadership for.
Amen. But my sister scholar, you said a very important point. And those three points should go out to everyone, whether you are our members or not. Understand that we do evangelism. After that, we desire, we do discipleship. And then we raise leaders. And I'm just happy with this man of God, Paul, is a man who understood that the work of God or taking gospel to the Gentiles could not just be done by himself alone. And therefore, along the way, he could pick people and raising them. It is a wake-up call to men of God in our Mid East and everywhere who are listening to us, that as you do God's work, be raising other people, be raising sons, Timothys and Tituses. And I'm glad that I'm sitting next to my Paul, Pastor Joyce here. She has been really working with me and just raising me and making me to become relevant to the ministry. And Pastor, I'm very happy as I do this God's work. I know Timothy is very strong in God's work.
You're welcome.
Amen.
May I say something?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to take you back to where we started and just talk about the way Paul, Paul now picks even Silas. I want to say to the church and even to everyone that is watching, the work of the kingdom has never lacked someone to do it. And even as I sit here, as somebody who is working in the kingdom, I shouldn't feel that I am very special. If today I choose to go another direction, there is Silas waiting. And this humbles me completely. There is Silas waiting, there is a Timothy waiting, and God will pick them up. Because the most important thing is the work of the kingdom. It's not the person. As much as the person is important. And I also wanted to mention that when there is a sharp disagreement between missionaries or church members, it only, I think it comes when you're focusing your mission on yourself. Like I would say, I can't go to Garissa. What am I thinking in my head? Probably there will be bandits along the way or something along the way. So I'm mindful about Joyce. I am not mindful about the kingdom. So what brings disagreements and things like that could also be because you're focusing, you're putting the focus on yourself and not on the kingdom. Because if God says that this message of the kingdom will be preached everywhere, everyone, even in the Middle East, everywhere, even in Korea and even in China and all over the world, people must hear the gospel. So if we put our lives like a second thing and we put the kingdom as a priority, we will go everywhere the Lord wants us to go.
Amen. Could there be any other person with a point to make? If there isn't, I want to say that when Paul was going on his way and picking Titus and Timothy, they went strengthening churches. And since the missionary call is not to make converts, but disciples, as we do God's work, let's always be purpose in raising the disciples, making disciples. Disciples must be well fed with the word of God. They must be well trained in the way to grow in salvation. We don't just preach salvation to people and leave them hanging. Remember, they are like babies. And I think Paul was so very conscious of that and he kept doing this. The mission we undertake should be guided by the spirit of God. You know, when Pastor talks about that God will never lack anyone. Remember, His spirit is sufficient and He can give it out to everyone He chooses to use to further His mission here in earth. And we'd call that misiurday, the mission of God. He knows the field and directs where there is work for us. Let me tell you that God does not just send us anywhere. He sends us where there is work. And when Pastor talks about Garissa, and I'm very happy that GCI, through our general overseer, we have RCPAs and we are going to Garissa. We are already in Marsabit. And because we are in Marsabit, it means Isiolo is our place. Marsabit is already there, Garissa is already there. So if we are sent there, meaning there is work of God and the 47 counties, there is work. Amen. So, yes, I can see Sister Scholar is...
Yeah. Just looking at Timothy, who Paul chooses to go on the journey with. Timothy was a young man. He was a new convert. He was a convert, he had converted not so long ago. But just the fact that he was a young person means the work of the mission is for everyone, age notwithstanding. So the youths out there, the teenagers out there, Sunday school children out there, this work is for all of us, not only for the older people in the church.
Amen. Yes, Beatrice?
Yes, a small point on Timothy. I'm just wondering, when Paul found him, we are told that he circumcised him so that he does not offend the Jews. And I was just thinking, in our mission work, at times we may come across people who are so much dedicated, but they may be having some defects. Like maybe they are not, they may not be well privileged to have good clothing and something like that. Something that could offend people when they go like to open air crusades to speak. People will start saying, maybe the people who fear God don't know how to dress or something like that. For me, I'm feeling that that action that Paul did on Timothy is like also picking somebody and then you look at where the needs that the person could be having so that when you go to present yourselves before people as you speak the word, they may not have anything to talk about you.
Sure.
I'm thinking like that.
And also maybe to add, at times it's good, we take mission work and in some places, maybe if a lady goes in a short dress, it's very offensive. In places like India, if you wear a short dress, it's very offensive. But if you expose your stomach, that is okay. So maybe at times during mission work, we have to conform to some cultures and treat ourselves a bit here and there just to fit into the right, into whatever environment that you're going to minister in.
Sure, sure, sure.
And I also think that, you know, for Timothy, Scholar has said that he was a young man, but he had a mother and a grandmother who were grooming him into the kingdom of God and making him a strong believer and a devoted believer. So even mothers out there, don't wait until the church picks you and sends you probably to Trukana to go and minister there. When you are at home, you are a representative of the kingdom, the children that you're bringing up should be well groomed and well versed with the word of God. So that as the work of God continues, when Barnabas has gone backwards and probably Silas has gone to the other side, then your son or your daughter can be picked for the work of the kingdom to go. Because the river must flow, as we have always said. Let whoever resigns, if Shikuku resigns from the Bible study, let me tell you, we need to pick scholar and continue with the journey. So groom your children and prepare them for the mission of God. Looking at Timothy, if I can mention this, Timothy's mother was a Jew and his father was a Greek. And according to the culture of the Jews, the child took their what? Took their mother's faith. So if your mother is a Jew, you become a Jew automatically. So Timothy had not been circumcised because the other side is the father who is a Greek and for them it was not a problem. Circumcision was for Jews. But like we are saying, for the sake of the Jews, he had to do that. So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Jews take their whatever from the mothers and not from the fathers. Like us Africans here, we take our identity from our fathers, but that's so different.
Amen.
Yeah.
My brother Godfrey, could you be having something to add? Okay, let's continue. I want to say that during this second journey again, this is where Paul went to Philippe and delivered the slave girl and also the prison experience which led to the jailer's salvation. After stopover in Ephesus, they went back to Antioch. The first thing that I want to say is that sometimes when we are out there on a missionary work, we might meet people who are suffering one way or the other. One thing that should be very clear to us, we need to see the suffering of Christ in their lives so that we respond to them. Because our Christ is not only meeting our spiritual needs, is also meeting our emotional needs, our physical needs and other needs that we have. As these people will also see the joy of Christ on the cross in us. Because that is all about what Christ has called us to do. And you people, you need to understand that when they were preaching and taken to jail, you need to understand what really happened in the jail. you need to understand what really happened in the jail, that they began to do what? To praise God in songs and in what? In hymns. And a jailer, somebody was being put there just to take care of them, realizing that the doors were open and he thought that the disciples, not the disciples, but the apostles were no longer there, or the prisoners, wanted to kill himself, but Paul talks to him and tell him, no, we are here. And this man asked a question, what do I need to do in order to get this salvation? How I wish that somebody is outside there and then you also have the same question. Look at how God is working miracles. Could you just be desiring this particular salvation? Pastor, you seems to be having a point.
Eh, yes. Yes. Okay, you mentioned that after, after a stopover at Ephesus,
Yeah.
they went back to Antioch.
Hmm.
And you said that rushing and I feel that we can, we can spend a second there.
Yeah.
Why did they go back to Antioch? Remember, Antioch was the sending church.
Hmm.
And if we are learning from Paul, when we go out for a missionary journey, it's important to come back.
Hmm.
If this, if GCI is the sending church,
Hmm.
we need to come back to GCI and come and give a report before we take up another missionary journey. That was the system of Paul. So they were going back to Antioch to bring a report and then pick the next missionary journey and continue with it.
That should be very, very clear. Paul used to go back to the Antioch just to give a report. And I think we have also been told, we as a GCI ministry, we are going out there, taking the gospel, we are taking the forty-seven counties because we are not only evangelizing Kenya. As my sister, as Scholar said, we are evangelizing the world.
Hmm.
And I know with the time, our vision is going to expand, Gio, that we shall even go now to take Uganda, take Tanzania and the other countries. But it is always good for us to come back and give report of what is going, taking place outside there. Sister Scholar?
Yeah, just also to appreciate the church in Antioch, the sending church.
Hmm.
Because they, they took upon themselves the work of planning and funding the missionary journeys.
Sure.
And so they, they had the resources, yes, and Paul was ready to go.
Hmm.
So even in our churches today, maybe you're in a position where you cannot go, you cannot be active in the mission work and or you're not able to go out there and minister the word of God. We have a missions department that needs our support.
Hmm.
So as we can be there, people who are facilitating for them, the, whatever they need to go out and spread the word of God out there. So we can support them financially or with any other resource that they may require from time to time. Those who are blessed with big four-wheel vehicles and there's a mission out there somewhere, offer your vehicle. That is what God has blessed you with and we can all use our resources to bring glory to the kingdom of God.
Amen. So as I have heard clearly and all of us is that sometimes you may not be physically present for the mission work, but we need to be supporting the work of the mission. Because when you do that, many people are going to receive the word of God. The early church never sat down, they never relaxed. After being close with the power, they went doing God's work and we are seeing that Paul doing very well. So that brings us to the end of that particular mission, our second missionary, part one. And we still continue with it, part two, that is beginning from verse, chapter seventeen, verse one to eighteen, going up to chapter twenty-two. You can take time to read. And here we are now seeing something else. We are told that, that is Paul, he left Luke at Philippi and went with Silas. We are talking about Dr. Luke here. And let me just remind you that when we began doing the introduction of the book of Acts, we said that the book of Acts was written by Dr. Luke. Here we are told that he left Luke at Philippi and went with Silas and Timothy westward to Thessalonica. For three Sabbaths, he went to the synagogues and reasoned with the local Jews and God-fearers. He was reasoning with the Jews and God-fearers. He used scriptures to show the people how Christ had to suffer and rise from the dead, kingdom message. Remember, during our second Bible study over this book of Acts, we talked about Jesus Christ being the center of message. Every time we are talking about God's work, let's remember that Jesus is there, the center of message. And Paul was using scriptures. What do we use? I said in one of our sessions that the Bible is the what? Is the syllabus, the constitution that we need to use in reaching out to God's people and in fulfilling the Great Commission. As we normally say at GCI, we fulfill the Great Commission with excellence. So we are excellent in the way we minister God's word, the way we minister to people's heart, the way we minister to people's needs. Because as I said, it is not only spiritual needs. Sometimes, you know, Pastor, I'm really challenged by sometimes how whites are doing the missionary work. Because they come to our place and they look at the physical need that people really want in that particular area. So they meet that one first, so that when they reach out to individual people with the good message of word of God, people will connect with them. And we also need to use that formula. Yeah.
You know, Peter, as you talk about that, I remember one of the journeys that I took and we, to Ilarette, I keep referring to it because it was amazing.
Yeah.
But what I want to say specifically is that we, we, we were a team from Africa, Kenya specifically, and a team from the US. And you know, they came with a lot of clothes and a lot of sweets and a lot of money and because we were putting up some tabernacles in the area.
Hmm.
And they spent a lot of money. The whole mission journey took, costed the team four point five million. And so in one of the sessions when we were seated there discussing,
Hmm.
I asked one of the ladies how they managed to, to get that money for mission work and all that. And they told, in fact, she told me, sometimes we do our work and we do an extra work,
Hmm.
like washing people's clothes to, to save money for the mission.
Hmm.
And you know, here in Africa, we are waiting for the Muzongo to come and give us clothes and sweets and things while we are not even willing to sacrifice anything. Can you imagine? After your job, you find a few clothes to wash, you get a hundred shillings or a thousand shillings and you save it. You say this one will go to Ilarette to bring the gospel of peace to them. So I want to challenge the Africans who are watching us today. Do not wait for the white man to come from America and wherever else to come and give you goodies. Begin to save up money, begin to do an extra job, even cleaning the people's compounds and even going for another whatever mission, even if it is going to the farm and selling off some maize. And put that money aside for R C P S, the rapid charge planting strategy.
Hmm.
Keep money aside, take a certain percentage from your income, put it aside and let us go and take the gospel to the nations. Let's not wait for the Muzongo to come and plant a church for us. Africans, we can do it. And GCI, we can do it through R C P S. What we call the rapid charge planting strategy.
Amen. Pastor, when you talk about R C P S, something has just pricked my heart, that we could have members in the church, maybe here at Central or in our other branch churches. They know very well that they come from a particular county. And the county members normally meet to strategize on how they can take the mission work to their county. But these members don't want to subscribe to such kind of a call. We are here to emphasize that Paul was a very good example. The early church showed us how the mission work should be done. And through the vision of GCI from our Gio, we realize that we don't need just to sit here at Central and feel comfortable. There are people in my county, Migori, there are people in other counties, in Kiambu, in Bungoma, in Kakamega, everywhere. These people need the gospel of God. We shall not sit to wait for the Mzungos to come and help us to reach out to other people. We can start with the little that we have, as God will continue extending the mission through us. And as we continue, I want you, I want also to let us know that Paul was received well and he planted a spirit empowered missional church there, where he was received during this journey. And this tells me that every time we go to take God's word, let us pray to God that we shall plant spirit empowered missional, missional churches, not just planting churches. Churches that are self-reliant, but they obey God, they subscribe to God, they respect God's word. As we are going to see, it is here where we are going even to emphasize where the Berean came from. I think this is the day that we need to explain. So that every time you hear of Thursday, you will not wait. You just want to sit down with your family, your children, your wife, your husband and say, do you know? It is Berean Bible study. Could there be anyone with a point to add? Could there be anyone with a point to add? Yes.
Yeah, just to mention that the Bereans received the word of God
Hmm.
and they did not just believe what Paul was saying, they took time to study the word alone after that
Hmm.
and just to get more insights into the word of God.
Hmm.
And so we should not also just wait until it's Thursday or it's Sunday or it's, it's, it's Sunday afternoon for the youth's church.
Hmm.
We should also have personal time where we study the word of God, we read the word of God.
Hmm.
And in our team, we call it a devotional garden,
Hmm.
where you're planting something in your devotional garden each and every morning when you wake up, just by reading the word of God and meditating on it.
Amen. Devotional garden. And we are bringing this to you. We got it and we are using it, that every morning when you wake up, we just desire that God, even if I read a verse of your word, speak to me. May I understand your will through this? And as we talk about the Berean, as she has said, I want you to know that they received, they received the message and eagerly examined the scriptures to determine if Paul was teaching the truth. If I can explain something on that particular point. It is very difficult and I love how we have been brought up as a ministry and we say thank you to our spiritual father, our Gio, that the word of God must be read. Don't just come to church empty-handed. When you are going to school, you carry books. When you are going to work, you carry, like ladies carry their bags, they have a lot of stuff in their bags. When we are coming to the church, you find that bags have carried some other things, but there is no Bible. It is high time that we come with the Bibles into the house of God. And even after we have left the church, because sometimes during the preaching, we might not have enough time to examine the word of God, let's go back home. It is on a Sunday, it is a Sabbath, let's take time, just go through the Bible, examine, just to establish the truth of the word of God. That is where the Berean began. And that is what we are doing here with the help of God, with the help of the Holy Spirit, that we don't just want to speak God's word with our own human knowledge. We are doing it with the guidance of the Holy Spirit, that we break the bread of the word, so that you understand it. And even as we do this, dear viewers, you also take your time, go back to the reading of the word, understand what the word of God says. Says, I don't know whether someone else could add something. Yes, Sister Beatrice, I can see your microphone is towards.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say that when the Jews heard what Paul had done at Berea,
Hmm.
they poisoned the people there.
Hmm.
But already we have, we have seen that when these people had the scripture from Paul, they did not just take it like that.
Hmm.
They also looked into so as to know whether he was speaking the truth. And after that, I think they must have really accepted him there. So that when they were being poisoned against him, they even offered protection for him.
Hmm.
So this shows that even divine favor was upon Paul and even the people he had spoken to. That shows that when we serve God, even if people may, may, may want to poison others against us,
Hmm.
God will always come in to protect us and He will make us to have favor even before Him and those whom we are working among. That is what is coming out there. And they are saying that he was even escorted, he was given an escort
Hmm.
because they knew that this was a man of God.
Amen. Any other points?
Yeah, okay. So as he is escorted from Berea,
Hmm.
then he goes to Athens.
Hmm.
And so we can transition to Athens if you allow.
Yes.
And that was the city of Hidalatry. There were so many gods in the, in the city of Athens. They had a god for almost everything.
Hmm.
And there is one that they didn't even know his name and they didn't even know what he was in charge of. But they said to their known god, you know? And when Paul arrives in Athens, he discovers that there is an inscription somewhere written to their known god and he seized the opportunity. I love the wisdom of Paul.
Hmm.
He seized the opportunity to bring them from the known to their unknown.
Sure.
So, so he started speaking and saying to them that I will explain to you that god that you're calling their known, who he is. And that was a platform for, for Paul to preach the gospel. So I want to encourage our viewers and even ourselves here,
Hmm.
even when there's a controversy like what Beatrice has talked about and people want to kill you, people are poisoning others because of you, don't even worry about that. God is taking care of you. And He will usher you to another place and you will minister there as well. Yeah.
Thank you. I would like to pick from what Pastor was saying. Paul was taken to Athens.
Hmm.
And we know the Greek philosophers who wanted, who always wanted new ideas. And then we, we find out that he was taken to the, to a high respected court.
Hmm.
And what amazes me is how Paul, in the environment he finds himself, he manages to pick on something
Hmm.
within the environment to explain the word of God.
Hmm.
In this case,
Hmm.
he began noting how religious they were.
Hmm.
And he said how he had found an altar
Hmm.
with the inscriptions which Pastor talked of to their known god.
Sure.
And from that, Paul explains the message of Christ to the people so deeply, using an example or something which they can understand.
Amen.
And the challenge for us is that in every situation we find ourselves, God provides all that we need to present the gospel.
Amen.
It could be perhaps in an office situation, maybe you are on a journey
Hmm.
or maybe you are in a, in a celebration or even in a difficult situation, God will always present an opportunity to explain and to present this gospel.
Amen. Thank you very much. God is there for us. So as we continue with this journey, we also see Paul going through Corinth. And here he had a very long stay. That one you can find from the book of Acts, chapter eighteen, from verse one to seventeen. And we are told that he walked from Athens to Corinth and met a man by the name Aquila and his wife Priscilla. These people had fled from Italy due to Emperor Claudius who expelled the Jews. And what is amazing me is how this couple was a very dedicated couple. We are told that they were tent makers like Paul. So he stayed longer and worked with them. Look at a missionary on a journey doing God's work, meeting some people who are the same work that he used to do. And then he took time, he stayed there longer and worked with them. And when Timothy and Silas arrived from Macedonia, we are told that he devoted himself exclusively to preaching the gospel. He dedicated himself. So as we do God's work, let's dedicate ourselves exclusively to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ. Gospel that is centered on Christ, Jesus, as we have said before. And I don't know whether someone else have a point, because we are about to bring this to a closure. If someone has a point to add, I'll be very glad to have you speak. Yes, Pastor?
Okay, I love the spirit of Priscilla and Aquila.
Hmm.
When, when they realized that Apollo's was not very, very expanded in his knowledge. very, very expanded in his knowledge about the kingdom business, they never rebuked him in front of the church or in front of every other person. They took, they took him to their house and went and educated him on the things that he didn't know. And this is to remind all of us that I do not have a monopoly of understanding or wisdom. There are people who know things that I do not know. And therefore I should be able to have a teachable spirit, even if I'm a preacher of the gospel. I need to wear a teachable spirit so that Shikuku can be able to teach me on things that I don't properly understand. That doesn't mean that I have robbed, he has robbed me of my position, so to speak, or he has robbed me of what people think about me, but he's helping me to become a better preacher. So I love the spirit and the spirit of even not rebuking somebody in public. If you realize that one of us is not doing the right thing, then you need just to call them aside and talk to them quietly. The rest of the congregation will know that he learned the next time he does ministry. Yeah, and we will give glory to God for that.
Amen. And that tells me that there is a lot of wisdom when we are doing God's work and even in correcting people in the work of God. So as we want to come to an end, we have understood how Aquila and his wife did correct the man of God. And as we have also said that there was a lot of dedication. We are told here that Paul left the synagogue and began to teach in the house of teachers, just as a Jewish proslet. Soon Crispus, the ruler of the synagogue, turned to the Lord along with his entire family. And upon hearing this, many Corinthians believed. What does that one mean? When the word of God is well-presented, to me as a man, if I have my family, I need to make sure that it influences the entire family. We have to serve God entirely with our family. So I'm really happy with how Crispus, the ruler, did this. He understood and he committed himself. We want to come to an end. Our time is actually up. And I want to allow each and every one of us to give us parting shots as we come to an end. Let me begin with my brother, Godfrey. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have learned that let us use every opportunity that God gives us to share his love to others. Thank you.
Okay, I have learned that even as a missionary or even as a believer in the word of God, I should have a teachable spirit and be ready to learn.
Amen.
I have learned that reports giving during mission is very important because it's then that you are able to know the challenges that are there and correct on the same. I've also learned that we need to fund the work of God. Where if we are not going for missions, we need to give those who are going to enable them or to facilitate them to do their work. And also, something that just struck me is that the writer of this book that we are studying, the book of Acts, was a doctor. So that means that in the work of God, in the, in the work of God, we are not supposed to look at our status. Once God has called us, we have to just go and work for him. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and for me, I've learned that the work of mission, the mission work is not only about making converts or bringing converts to God, but we should also disciple them to be good disciples and followers of Jesus Christ, who can also be able to continue with the work of God. Because as we keep saying, the river has to keep flowing.
Amen. Dear viewers, we are excited that again we have brought the word of God to you. We've been looking at the journeys that were made by Paul, the apostle, to make sure that the work of God reached many people, even towards the end of his second missionary journey. We are told that Paul had to, he left Corinth with Priscilla and Aquila and sailed for Syria where he had his aircraft to fulfill a vow. Then from there, he had to go back to Antioch. You see that Paul used to leave Antioch, going out to do God's work and then taking back reports. So that in line with what Beatrice was saying, that taking report back to the, to the sending church is very, very important. So this is even going out to all our branch churches outside there and the many churches that will be begun this year or next year because the river of opening churches is flowing at GCI. Let us be obeying the sending church and then giving back the report. A lot we have learned. And let's go outside there. Let's evangelize the world. Let's make disciples and let's raise leaders. That is in line with the mission of our church here at GCI. We want to say thank you. If you've not given your life to Christ, I still want to call you to this serving grace of our Lord Jesus Christ. Take an opportunity, make a date with Christ and let it not be a later date, even today when you have had the word of God. Because you cannot belong to this particular missionary work if you've never given your life to Jesus Christ. So I want to bring our work to the, to an end and to remind you of our church services. I want to say that every Saturday we have Battle Acts Fellowship from 2:00 PM. And on Sundays, we have very many services that we need to bring to your attention. The first service begins in the morning, 7:30. The second one is 9:30 and the third one at 11:30. We also have Sunday School program being aired from 9:00 AM. We have youth service at 3:00 PM. And then we have our family fellowship at 8:00 PM in the evening. And then every Tuesday we have prayers that are being conducted by our elder Alan. And on Thursday again, we shall meet as we bring the book of Acts to a closure. May God bless you for taking your time and let me lead someone into prayer of repentance and as we also bring this program to a closure. Dear Father, I want to pray for this lady, this man, this boy or this girl who has listened to the word of God this wonderful evening. And in their hearts, oh God, they are preached with the word of God and they are making a decision, Jehovah Lord, Father, to turn unto you. We pray, Jehovah God, that as the word of God is being preached, just as we have seen in the Bible, Paul preached the word of God. You raise leaders, oh God. And even other people had to break and examine the scripture to find out the truth that was being told. God, I know there is somebody who is looking at the scriptures to examine even what we have shared. Lord, may you just continue speaking to them. That person who is repenting their sins, oh God, I want to pray for them, that Lord, as they make a decision to repent, forgive their sins, oh God, as they, as they get enjoined to the family of Christ, oh God. We also want to thank you for this opportunity that we have got, Lord, to do your work. We have been looking at the book of Acts and as we bring this book to a closure next Thursday, Father, we continue to pray that continue to empower us, speak to us. May we understand the church and her mandate and everyone who understands these words, oh God, may they associate themselves with the truth of the word of God, to the glory and honor of your name. Thank you for the panelists, oh God. Thank you for everyone, even the media team for the work they are doing, Jehovah Lord, just to be part of us as we do this work. We give you glory and we give you honor. For we pray all this, believing and trusting in Jesus' mighty and holy name. Amen. Amen. Shalom, shalom, shalom. God bless you.
Hello viewers. Thank you so much for tuning in today. It's our prayer that you have been nourished and edified. Remember, this service is not complete without giving. To do so, use Empresso Paybill number 844632. Account number, offering, or type, or shipfold redemption, or any other. You can also use our Equity Bank account number 1080296849538. Account name, Nairobi Gospel Center International. In need of prayers, counseling, or inquiries, reach out to us on 0725255941 or 0734662577. May our good Lord richly bless you and keep you. May he cause his face to shine upon you now and forevermore.